All right, so, welcome tonight. This is a meeting of the zoning board of appeals. This is October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, seven thirty P M. This is a hybrid Zoom and main meeting room of eight Conway Street, South Deerfield, Mass. This meeting will be held in a hybrid fashion with the opportunity for both in-person attendance and remote participation. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting slash hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. The meeting will be held in person in the main meeting room of Deerfield in municipal offices in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A. Anyone intending to record the meeting must identify themselves to the clerk and provide their name and address for the record. Meeting attendees should mute their phones, star six for landlines unless asking questions or commenting. All attendees should wait to speak until other participants are finished. So, we can have this meeting called to order. At this time, or at that time. Seven thirty-three is on the screen. We'll do a roll call. Gabby Richard Harrington.
Present online.
Mark Brennan.
Mark Brennan, present in person.
David Potter, present.
Tia Christensen, present in person.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five?
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. So is Gabby making the motion and Tia with the second? Any comments, questions? Gabby, anything?
No.
Tia, all set? Okay. So, we're ready to take a vote on accepting the minutes of September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. Gabby, how do you vote?
Gabby Richard Harrington, aye.
Mark?
Mark Brennan abstaining.
David Potter, aye.
Tia Christensen, aye.
So moved, so voted. Okay. Next order of business, new business. As I don't think we have old business. Okay, new business, special permit for Seventh Thayer Street. Notice is hereby given that the Deerfield Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, at seven thirty P M. on an application filed by Gary Bowdre for a special permit for property located at Seventh Thayer Street, identified in the assessor's records as map one seventy-four, lot one thirty-eight, to allow for a multifamily dwelling in the C V R D district pursuant to Bylaw, Chapter One Seventy-nine, Section Twenty-two Thirty. Application documents available for review and the municipal offices are online. Okay, so, we welcome the applicant to come on up. Put the microphone as close to you as is uncomfortable for me. And we have a sign-in sheet?
Oh, sign-in sheet?
Yep.
Brian's in the operation.
Yeah, no, feel free to take a seat as well, you know, co-conspirators. And so, everyone can just sign in and, you know, state your names for the record.
Gary Bowdre.
Welcome, Gary.
Thank you.
Kay Bowdre.
Teresa Bowdre.
Okay, thank you. So, Gary, you'll be the principal speaker. So, just make sure the microphone's as close to you as you can get it.
Okay.
We are recording. And so, yeah, so basically, this is your chance to sort of verbally present, you know, the gist of what you're looking to do and any pertinent information. You can talk to us about, you know, the diagrams, et cetera, the whole content.
We bought the property about two years ago, went about renovating the main building, which was the front Victorian home.
Hold on to the microphone, please. I don't think they can, it's not picking you up.
Okay, can you hear that? Okay, okay, sorry. Rookie at this. We've finished renovating that property. The back building, both buildings had been abandoned for over fifteen years. Rebuilt the garage that had collapsed and have gone about making sure the back building is structurally sound and will stand. And we wanted to put three apartments, two that would be rented and one would be our residence, so we'd have a family group.
Okay.
My daughter lives in the front house with her husband and child, who goes to school here, first grader.
Okay, and so, currently, who resides at the property?
Kay, Brandon, and Boone.
Okay.
Bowdre.
Yep.
Garvey. Yeah, I can say Bowdre, it's Garvey.
Okay, and, so, all the renovations you're talking about would be taking place in that back?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. We need to have you with the microphone.
The back building is unlivable.
Yeah, it's empty.
I see. So, you'd go about creating apartments in a building that's now usable?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. Any further context or?
Other than, you know, we're trying to build as sustainable building as we can to keep our costs down. We did the geothermal in the front building. We probably won't do that in the back building with a three-family, be pretty cost prohibitive. But, the rest of it, you know, the building inspector has been involved since day one. It's been a big help in providing guidance. So, we're just looking to get three apartments in there.
Okay, all right. So, at this time, does anybody on the board have any questions? Start with Gabby.
Well, having lived across the street from that particular residence for a very long many years, the diagram that you gave us shows one driveway, but it looks like you've put a second driveway in on the west side of the house. Is that gonna be staying?
The driveway was put in last year to get access to the garage in the, behind the house, because the way it was configured, you had to drive between the buildings to get to that garage. So, we put in a gravel driveway, took out the grass and put in gravel. There's no curb cut, because there is no curb on the street. And our neighbor was, wanted to have it done.
The purpose of it, too, is that like the original driveway that's on the left-hand side when you're facing the house, that will be the driveway and where the parking is for the residents that will be living in that back building, with the newer driveway on the right-hand side going to the garage will be for the front residents. So, it separates the two residents to have their own parking.
I'm just wondering why that's not on your plan?
I think it is. We'll have to pull it. I haven't looked at it.
Okay, so I'm gonna share my screen. I can get the plans up, at least the ones that you've sent me.
I don't have the plot plan in front of me. I just have the diagram of the back building in front of me. But it should be detailed in the parking on the main.
This is what we have.
All right, that's what I'm looking at. I don't see the new driveway there.
Yeah.
I guess that would be here.
Right there, yes.
The new driveway would be here where I'm doing the pointer, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And that's for which building?
It's for the front and our back entrance for our apartment. Our apartment would be in the back of that building. So, you have a three-car garage and an additional parking spot right on that back area. And then our entrance would be the back of the building. So, the parking on the right side is six spots for the two apartments. That would be in the front of that back building.
Do I have that on the next? Yeah. Am I correct? These are the parking spots?
Yeah.
And those people would access the apartment building from the, from that side, right there?
From the front of the building, yes.
But you would drive ultimately past the front building and then through, between those two buildings?
We would drive in the right side of the building right to the garage.
I see.
The three-car garage plus one outdoor space.
Right, where's that outdoor space? That's in front of it?
Right.
Oh, you go down back to the other?
There it is, yeah. The garage is the lower-left side, right there.
Yeah, okay.
And that's a three-car garage and there's a parking spot to the right of it, next to the building.
So, it's not paved past the garage?
No, that back area is paved, but that's in between the first, the main house and the garage.
I apologize to ask this again because I was taking notes, but how do we get to the garage? Are we passing those six parking spaces?
No, it's on the right-hand side or the left in this drawing here.
Okay.
Is the driveway comes straight on the left line right there.
So, on the west side of that front property?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, we have direct access that way to those back parking spots there, and then we have the six additional parking spots on the right side.
And what's the width and surface type of that driveway on the west side of the property?
It's fifteen feet wide.
And is this the gravel or is this?
It's gravel, yes.
And then what's the width and surface type for the other driveway?
The other driveway, I think we have forty feet between the building and our property line, and I brought it off my east-side property line as a buffer to the neighbors. We didn't want to interrupt them with the cars, so there's a lot of room there. Those spaces are twenty feet by nine feet, I believe, each one of those.
Okay. So, we're looking at what looks to be one parking space for one property, and then is that six spaces for the other, or are these three? No, that's the garage, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Total of ten?
Total of ten spaces.
So, those garages aren't gonna be used for storage? Those are gonna be used for parking?
Parking, yes. My wife's looking forward to it.
And where's the parking or driveway for the front house?
That, that's the garage and the, those four spots.
I see, so they'll access, I got it, okay.
Yep. That'd be our family parking area.
Okay, yeah.
Will each apartment only have two residents?
I didn't understand.
I mean, what happens if one apartment, if it turns out that there need to be seven or eight spaces because you've got a teen that's just got a license, there's no parking on Thayer Street, where would you put any additional cars?
Well, so, the six spots that you see to the east side of the main house are actually for those two units that will be in the front. One unit is just gonna be a one-bedroom unit, so that's allocated two spots, and then the other unit will be a two-bedroom unit, so that's where the allocated other four spots are for.
So, how many units total are there gonna be?
There'll be two additional units there in that, and each one will have two and a half spots is what the zoning needs, so that's five spots. We're providing six.
So, you're saying additional units? I guess like regardless of like whether it's owned or occupied or whatever, how many units are there total on this parcel?
In the back building is three.
So, there's three in the back building?
That's correct.
And then how many units in the front building?
It's just, it's a house, it's a single family.
Okay. So, I guess for the rest of the zoning board, it's, Chapter One Seventy-nine, Section Thirty-one Thirty, prescribes how many parking spaces we need to have. So, for a multifamily, we need to have two parking spaces per dwelling unit plus a half a space per unit.
That's correct.
Okay. What I don't have clarity on, and I'm not sure if anyone on the board can answer this, this one's a new one for me, is whether or not a garage counts as a parking space. I don't believe it does, but I would wanna get further clarity on that.
There's room in front of the garage for three cars to park, not even in the garage.
Okay.
I mean, that could be four right across there, three inside, but there could be three just as well right in front of it.
And so, all that's paved in front of the garage and there's, is there room?
It's all paved.
Assuming that your wife didn't get her wish and the garage was not available for parking, is there space to turn around for the three cars parked in front of the garage?
Yeah, that's, it's a big area, yes.
I presume that all the renovations and the new plans would have to be already approved by the building inspector who's part of the meeting?
They would, yeah. I mean, it's, it depends on whether it's allowed or not, but if it is, then of course they would be, yeah.
Right.
The house has already been, itself has already been remodeled. I don't, I missed the very beginning. Did they add the fact that this used to be a funeral home, and this is how this exists?
Yeah, it was an abandoned funeral home. I don't know where they parked their cars for funerals. They must have parked up and down Thayer Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, Gabby might know that.
Yeah, they did, and they also sometimes use the church parking lot.
Sure, that makes sense.
Okay, well, I guess that, yeah, 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 no doubt, but important information nonetheless.
Yeah.
Okay. Gabby, any further questions?
No, well, so, we're not approving any building plans within that three-family, but I imagine it goes to the standards of a three-family sprinkled and all of that, so that would be, yeah, I don't think I have any problem. I think this is a great idea.
Yeah.
Mark?
So, yeah, just doing some math here. It looks like if we've got, it's three units in the back.
Yeah.
You know, under Thirty-one Thirty, it's two spaces per dwelling unit plus zero-point-five space per unit for guests, so we're at seven and a half spots, so that's gonna have to be eight. And then for the single family, we need to have two spaces under that, so...
And that's where we have ten.
We have to have ten spots.
Yeah.
So, I see, I see six plus the one, which makes seven delineated on the plans, and then we think that we can get three more in front of the three-car garage, is that right?
That is correct, yeah.
Well, I see the use in the garage, but I mean in front of the garage. I don't know that the garage counts as a space. We would probably need to get clarity on that if we got to that level, but, so, I see that there's a box there that's shaded on the part of the screen that Amy had up, so, I'm just, it looks, is that a parking space that's along the?
That's correct.
Okay, so, how do we fit three more and be able to turn? Is there a paved area closer to the north-side building? How much of that's paved? Like, can, if there's a guest parked in that shaded area, can someone that's in the three, parked in front of the three-bay garage, you know, back out and then get back to the driveway?
Well, that area's about a forty-foot square area in front of the garage.
Okay.
We could park, we could park it in various ways. I mean, we could paint, we could point toward one building and then the other ones straight in. There'd be plenty of room for turning around there now. Right now, we get four cars in there as it is.
The line that you have between the, the single-family house in the front and the funeral home in the back, that's not, that's not gonna be a physical barrier between the two sections, is it?
Uh, no.
No, okay. Yeah, there's a lot of room between that house and that garage.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all good?
Yep.
Do you have any further questions?
Yeah, I do. Just taking a look at, just for our reference, for the board in more detail on page thirty-eight, some of the specifics about the accessory.
Into the microphone, please.
Some, some questions just for, you know, the board and while you're still here with us. I'm referencing page thirty-eight in the zoning bylaws, where really, you know, is our details and our guidelines for, and you probably have read them, I'm sure, or been pointed to them. And so, one of the questions that I have, and what I don't see on the plans that we were given, is, and I could probably calculate it at some point, what's the total square footage of the proposed rental apartment units in the back?
Yeah, one would be just over six hundred and fifty square feet. It's a one-bedroom.
Okay.
The other apartment is the exact same size, except for it's two stories with two bedrooms upstairs. And the back is, yeah, in the back is about twelve hundred square feet, one-bedroom apartment for my wife and myself.
And would that be, have you decided yet? Would that be where you and your wife would live, would be in the twelve hundred?
Yes.
And so, the six hundred, the two six hundred and fifty square feet would be the proposed rentals?
Yeah, there's, there's six hundred and fifty square feet for a single bedroom, and then there's six hundred and fifty times two, because there's a downstairs up to thirteen hundred for the two-bedroom apartment.
Two floors, okay, yeah. Thank you for explaining that, I appreciate it. And then one of the, one of the things that I couldn't really get a, get a sense of, and I'm very familiar, it's on my walking route, and I've seen your progress as, from the last couple of years, and it's really quite impressive, so congratulations on the work you have done. What I don't see on the proposed plans are any measurements with regard to the setback requirements from neighbors, and obviously, the driveway is quite long, and so that seemed very obvious to me. There are other requirements that we have, and for the board, reference page thirteen, that I just, I wanted to have a little more information on, and, and I lean on my board members here in case I'm looking at the incorrect table or even our building, our building inspector, that there are dimensional requirements that come up with regard to frontage, minimal size of lot, maximum coverage, and then when it's a multifamily, that there's an increase in that. So, I just would love it if you could walk me through, if you have looked at that table, if you're familiar with it, or have any notes on the setbacks, or even if you don't have notes on the setbacks, what, what are the dimensions, like how far is your property or the buildings from your property lines and from the front of the road and from your back?
Gabby wants to speak? Is that, Gabby, did you have something to say?
It doesn't look to me like any of the footprint has changed, so that would be existing, correct?
Yeah.
So, they're not changing the footprint of the existing buildings, is that something we need to deal with then, the setbacks?
Bob, did you wanna say something, Bob?
Yeah, I mean, this is all pre-existing non-conformings, so the path that I saw that they could possibly take is under that section where you can, under a non-conforming structure, you can issue a permit, a special permit for a change of use. That's how I saw a possible path for this, because it doesn't conform to the dimensional standards, because it's pre-existing.
Yeah, it's twenty-two fifty-three, non-conforming structures, kind of just after the use tables on, it's page ten of a PDF, if you were looking at it digitally anyway.
Yeah, so, actually, that was gonna be a follow-up question that I was gonna have with respect to the driveway. So, that gravel driveway, was there a permit pulled for that?
We talked about that. We talked to our neighbor, and the implication was that there, it would be part of the ongoing construction of the front house to get the driveway there. If we had a, the neighbor didn't want it, we'd have to go ten feet off the line. If he was fine with it, we could go to the line. So, we just simply gravelled it and didn't really change the topography at all.
My concern here is, you know, when it comes to talking about how many parking spaces we have and how the cars get in and out, you know, I think that the driveway needs to be permitted, so I'm not, I'm not sure how that'll work.
I don't, I don't see how that's our purview though, right?
I think it is, because we can't, you know, grant a special permit for a multifamily that doesn't have adequate parking spaces if we don't have a permitted driveway.
But giving them a special permit doesn't preclude they're going through the inspection process and if?
Not at all. We can add a condition for that.
If they get denied by the inspector of those things, then the project doesn't go through.
Right, but?
Regardless of the special permit.
I don't think we're at the motion stage yet. I'm suggesting this for when we go to the conditions. Just talking about here.
Mark, what was the condition that you're suggesting?
The condition would be that we would have, well, I don't, I don't know if we're, if we're even at this spot yet. I guess my next follow-up question would be, assuming that we wouldn't be able to get a permit for the gravel driveway, can we still get through to that garage with the current layout?
Yeah, we, I mean, we can get through it, through the buildings. That's how they did it for the years with the, with the funeral home. That's the only way, and they got limos through there, so.
Yeah, it might, it might not even matter then, yeah.
Okay. Tia, did you wanna have any further discussion? You have any other questions?
No, I think I'm good with questions for you for this moment anyway. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Please have a seat. We'll proceed and hear from any of the public before we proceed to the decision-making process.
Can I ask one more question?
Absolutely.
I'm not sure if this matters or not, but the, many of the properties on Thayer Street had to address this, like this one is listed here as five and seven. There was a time, I don't know, about twenty-five years ago, when you had to fill out some paperwork to maintain the two separate properties and pay tax on them separately. Like, we were across the street and we did not fill out that paperwork. Does it make a difference as to whether that is still two separate properties or not?
I think that's maybe a question for Bob?
I don't think they are, but I don't have a clear answer for you on that. They, were they physically separated or given two separate addresses? Might be different subject.
A lot of the properties, I mean, like we were at what's now Ten Thayer Street, across from the church, and the yard next to us, it was fourteen and sixteen, and they renumbered the whole street. And when they renumbered the street, they gave us the option to continue to pay taxes on the two separate pieces, or they would then merge them into one piece and we'd pay taxes as Ten Thayer Street. So, we chose to do that, because we weren't gonna split it for any reason. I'm just wondering if there's any, if there are different conditions, if those are still two separate properties, that they're two separate dwellings, or if it doesn't make any difference anymore. I don't know that.
Everything I've seen shows physically like drawn as one property, but I, but I don't have a clear answer on that, yeah.
Yeah, I feel like, oh.
The deed shows that it's five-dash-seven. The deed shows that it's one parcel. So, we're not talking about two separate parcels here.
G I S maps show it as a single parcel.
Yep.
I'm wondering then why they're still listing it with the two separate addresses? Because the other ones have lost that.
Yeah, the actual address on the deed is not two separate. It's, as far as? Yeah, the actual address on the deed is not too separate. It's, it's, as far as the deed is concerned, it's five dash seven, not five eight.
E- each one of these u- units, if it was granted a special permit, will have to have their own addresses for nine-one-one purposes, but they'll probably be like an A, B, and C or to that effect.
Yeah, nine-one-one, telling all that stuff's different. As far as the actual, you know, deed, like, the way the land is recorded, it's recorded as five dash seven.
Interesting.
Okay. Are there any other questions before we allow the applicants to sit down? All right, you may be seated. All right, okay. Um, so, um, we're going to go to, uh, public comments and questions. Um, we give two minutes per speaker, uh, and we ask that you identify yourselves and come sign in at the table. If we have any butters, we always want to hear from butters first. We have a slim crowd tonight. Nobody online? You're welcome to come on up, you have public comment.
And can you please just, uh, put your name on the list?
Sure.
Thanks.
My name's Linda Malangowski. I'm, uh, the trustee for my dad, Ralph Oshewski, who owns three Thayer Street. And I just wanted to say that we fully support what Gary and family are doing. Um, they've, they've done an amazing job. They're great neighbors and we just really are here to support them. That's it.
Okay, great. You have a lot more time.
I'm done. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, so, any last concerns or requests for more information before we move forward?
Not from the applicants, no.
Okay.
For me, anyway.
Mm-hmm. Um, well, we, we, um, maybe it's the time also to look at the comments from our, um, uh, other boards. All right, so, this one, uh, from the highway superintendent. Um, the comment is that if the new units will have their own water meters installed, then a separate sewer bill will be needed.
That's basically just a requirement that, in, in, in the conditions, you know, he has to meet requirements, so that's covered.
Uh, from the planning board, we have no comment aside from, "I'm glad to see more housing available in town." All right, exclamation point. Police chief is saying that, "I respect they will be providing off-street parking. However, three units, I'd like to see where there will be five to eight spots for residents and visitors on that property." I think, I think we've seen that. And, uh, I think Bob's already mentioned, from the building commissioner, uh, the pathway through chapter one seventy-nine for the special permit regarding the nonconforming structure. So, if we want to discuss that any further, we can do that. And no comment from our friends on the finance committee. Buyer chief, no comments for this project. Okay, so, at this point, we can, uh, choose to close or continue the hearing. If we close the public hearing, we would move to our deliberations phase and then we would vote on the application. Is there any reasons anybody can think of to continue the hearing?
No, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
I second that. Gabby Richard Harrington.
Okay, then. Any discussion, questions, or comments about the motion to close the hearing? All right, let's vote on that motion. Gabby?
Gabby Richard Harrington, aye.
Mark Brennan, aye.
David Potter, aye.
Tia Christiansen, aye.
All right, so we have closed the public hearing. Uh, now we go into our deliberations phase. We still may reach out for questions if it's pertinent. Um, but, um, then at that point, we would, um, uh, move on to vote on the application and, uh, just to inform you, uh, that if there were any reason that you might decide, based on our deliberations, to, um, withdraw the application, that would be the time you'd be offered that opportunity. If it goes forward and we deny the application, there's another waiting period of about two years?
Uh, if you're denied, I believe it's two years before you can apply again.
Okay, just so you know, the whole way things work. Um, doesn't seem like it would go that way, but let's, 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 um, just so you know. Um, okay, so, the time for deliberation and, um, Tia, I invite you to deliberate first if you have comments that you want to put out on the table.
Uh, yeah, I, I have, I, I think I just want to make sure that I'm clear. So, I would like to flesh out a little bit, um, and Bob, you might have some, some input on this, that under, you know, the nonconforming uses and structures, so we have twenty-two fifty-four, which, uh, talks about the nonconforming single and two-family residential structures on page twelve of our book. And then, you know, in reading through this, it, it specifically says that, uh, maybe an alter or structurally change upon determination by the building commissioner that such proposed reconstruction, extension, alteration, or change does not increase the nonconforming nature of said structure and the issuance of a building permit where applicable. So, I see your notes, Bob. That's all pretty clear that you're saying, hey, I believe there's a path here. I, I guess for the board and, and just to make sure that I'm clear and following all of our, our bylaws here, we do have twenty-two fifty-five, which is abandonment of non-use. A nonconforming use or structure which has been abandoned or not used for a period of two years shall lose its protected status and be subject to all the provisions of this zoning bylaw.
Correct. It's no longer can be a funeral home or a business. It's currently a a gr- it's currently an abandoned building. And then, under that nonconforming structure section, you know, maybe I'm m- misinterpreting it, but I don't think I meant it says you can award a special permit to change the use of that nonconforming structure. So, you'd be awarding a permit to change it from now being a residential structure to a, to accessory structure, to a multifamily structure. That's the path that I saw was possible. Does that help? I mean, I could try to elaborate on it, but.
Yeah, was it, and, and maybe it doesn't matter, you know, just from a historical perspective and, and let me know if this is not pertinent to the discussion. Was the funeral home a residential space as well for the funeral director?
No, no, no. It, that was actually the, the funeral parlor and I believe the, I mean, I don't know the history exactly well. I think the front house possibly was lived in by the people who owned the funeral home. The back was a parlor and the garage was used for the horses and limousines.
Okay.
And it's all there, like, nothing's physically changing.
Well, and I think to clarify, Bob and I were looking at the two fifty-three nonconforming structure, because it was just a structure, not a nonconforming residential structure, if that helps.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a nonconforming use, which it, it's a nonconforming structure and the fact that, like, it doesn't conform to the lot or the, it's too close to the property lines, I believe. There's a bunch of issues with it.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Okay. I believe I am complete with the, that portion of my questions, so if you or Mark have, you or Mark or Gabby have anything else?
Okay. Mark, anything?
Um, nothing specific, but I was just wondering if we could go through, um, section fifty-three fifteen and, and just step through each of the, the different items that we normally step through at some point. Doesn't have to be right now. I'll, I'll defer to the other members if they have any specific questions.
Okay, thank you. Gabby, anything?
I, I, I think we had questions about the second driveway. I don't, I, I wasn't aware that you could just talk to a neighbor and agree that the driveway is okay. Um, yes, there's no curb cut, because there's no curb on the whole entire street, but, um, also there was, um, a hedge of lilacs there that was removed that would give at least some separation, but that can't go back, because now the driveway goes all the way to the property line. I don't know if we have any questions about that second driveway, but that, I think that's my only question at this point.
If you could come up and, for records.
The bushes that were removed were the neighbors. He wanted to remove them. It wasn't on our property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Remember that?
Yeah, and I think as far as the driveway situation goes, or, or a lot of these building conformity questions go, that's, that's not so much what we consider as far as, you know, issuing the special permit. We're looking at these conditions, I think Mark was talking about, and, you know, if they can get their other permits passed,
Okay.
they have what they need. Um, so, um, the, the, the first one here, so in the packet, is the impact statement for the special permit application. Um, the, uh, first item here, attendance at public schools, uh, not applicable, it says. Increase in vehicular traffic, and, and we can come back and discuss anything. Let me just r- r- read through what the applicant has stated. Increase in vehicular traffic, congestion, or safety at intersections, not applicable. Changes in the number of legal residences. This project will increase the number of legal residential units on the property from its current number to three additional legal units contributing to the town's housing stock. Provision of housing for town residents, while not formally designated as affordable housing, these apartments will offer additional rental housing options within South Deerfield, helping meet demand for smaller-scale market-rate housing. The impact on demand for municipal services. A modest increase in demand is anticipated for police, fire, and ambulance services, consistent with the addition of three residential units. No significant strain on town services is, is expected. The building is already on an established waste disposal route. The impact on public water and sewage. The property is connected to municipal water and sewer systems. The additional usage from three apartments is within capacity limits. No known public safety concerns related to crime are anticipated as a result of this project. The building will comply with all applicable fire and safety codes. The creation of three new dwelling units is expected to increase the assessed value of the property, resulting in an increase in annual property tax revenue for the town. Uh, not applicable in terms of creation or retention of jobs. Not applicable in terms of change in surface drainage and stormwater runoff, nor increased consumption of groundwater. Water, air, noise, and light pollution. No significant water, air, or light pollution is expected. Construction activity will be temporary and comply with noise regulations. Outdoor lighting will be residential in scale and directed to avoid light trespass. Land erosion or loss of tree cover. No land disturbance or tree removal is proposed, as the project is within an existing structure and developed lot. The project is located on an already-developed site and will not impact natural habitats or local ecology. No changes are proposed to the exterior structures that would affect scenic views. The building's profile and character will remain consistent with surrounding properties. The project remains, maintains the existing building footprint and aesthetic, fitting it in with the predominantly residential character of Thayer Street and the broader neighborhood. The building is not listed on any historic register. Renovations will respect the building's architectural style and the character of the neighborhood. The project will incorporate energy-efficient systems and materials where feasible. Construction will prioritize local contractors and suppliers when possible. Anybody wish to discuss any of those proposed conditions, or not the proposed, it's just the criteria for the special permit?
Um, not from, from this section. Um, if, if there's no other discussion here, I, I actually do want to go back to the, the nonconforming use, so, yeah.
Well, let's just hold it here, so if anybody else has discussion or concerns about how the applicant's presenting their meeting of these criteria.
N- none for me.
No, okay. Gabby, nothing? Okay, go ahead, Mark.
Um, so, you know, I'm, I'm just going back and looking at, um, section, uh, twenty-two fifty-four through twenty-two fifty-six. And, um, it's, it's not clear to me whether or not, um, this applies here. Uh, well, actually, it is clear to me that it applies here. Um, it, it looks like, uh, when, um, a structure has been abandoned or not used for a period of two years, um, that ability for, for, um, that to be used for the same things is extinguished. I'm having a hard time trying to figure out whether or not we can grant a special permit after that. It, I don't know if we would be in a variance territory here. So, unless someone here knows definitively, I think we might need to, uh, get way in from town council. And, um, if that's the case, I'd be prepared to make a motion for that, but, um, yeah, it's, it's not clear to me what, what happens after that two-year period and whether or not, um, we're, we're looking at a, uh, a special permit or if we're looking at a variance.
But it's not reverting to what it was abandoned. It was a business. It was a, a business that was used weekly. And after two years, it loses the right to be a business now. And now it's residential neighborhood. It's being used. It's going to be used as a residence.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not, it's not clear to me if there's, you know, any, any, so, if it, if it were continually, so, if this lot was conforming when the structures were made and it was continued to be, and continued to be used as a funeral home during that period, and then within the two-year period was, you know, i- if it wasn't abandoned for more than two years, I guess is a better way of saying it. Um, I don't think it would lose its protected status. But the bylaw says, right in, you know, section twenty-two fifty-five, that, um, uh, a nonconforming use or structure which has been abandoned for, or, or not used for a period of two years, shall lose protected status and subject to all provisions in the zoning bylaw. So, th- that, that's where I'm stuck. Um, I, 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 you know, I kind of sympathize with this, um, you know, because there are a lot of lots in South Deerfield that are nonconforming now. So, if all these structures were put up before the lot was nonconforming and, and then it falls out of use, again, I, I don't know if we even have the authority to grant a special permit anymore. Um, I, I'm, I'm not saying that we don't. It's just, I, I think we might need some more clarity here. Um, and if, if we don't have the ability to do that, then, you know, like I said, we might be looking at variance territory.
And what would you think the variance would do? What would, what would we vary from, from what to what?
Uh, I don't want to presume. Uh, I, I would want to get clarity on whether or not we have the authority to grant a special permit first.
Did you look at, uh, twenty-two fifty-three? The reasons you can change?
Yeah, I, I did. I did see this. So, if, if, you know, there's a a test in twenty-two fifty-three where, you know, it's not going to be substantially more detrimental, uh, I, I think that, that, that we could, uh, you know, apply that test. Uh, I'm just not sure if it's, uh, when we get to twenty-two fifty-five, if, if that's separate or if we, we do have the ability, um, you know, to a- apply this test even with twenty-two fifty-five. So, again, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying that we can't. It's just, I, I'm, I'm at a spot where I'm logically stuck. I, I, I don't know.
Well, I, I guess I'm confused and maybe, maybe, Bob, you can help us, or, or anyone actually, that, as far as process goes.
Well, I think it's a fair enough question, what, what he's asking, because and I don't have a clear answer. I mean, that section about the nonconforming structure does say you can award I mean, that section about the non-conforming structure does say you can award a special permit for a change of use if it's not more detrimental. However, the lot is deficient for a multifamily, at least frontage-wise, so I could, I could see both points. So I, 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 I wouldn't want to advise you either way, so.
So the, so the question is-
That's not helpful, however.
Uh, I guess I'm wondering, is the question about the judgment as to what is detrimental? Is that where the question lies?
No, the question is whether or not we have the authority to grant a special permit, and I, I, like, um...
Yeah, but I, I, I'm not, I'm not understanding what's preventing us from having that authority.
I don't know for sure, but I would like to get more clarity on how section 2255, uh, actually, 22, uh, how 2253 through 2256 work. This is, this is a new scenario to me, and, and, and I just don't understand if we can apply the test in 2253 with the condition of 2255 being at play. And I would like to seek counsel.
I, I, I don't have clarity either, which is really why I brought it up in the first place. I think the spirit of what was written here was to open doors and to try and provide flexibility. Yet for me, that is not a clear path as to, you know, it's A, B, and C. Therefore, you can issue a special permit, or you cannot, because we have two, two pieces of guidance here that don't really complement each other. And that creates confusion for me, and I would not be, um, I would not be in a place without further detailed information from, agree with Mark, from council, um, to make a vote on this.
Gabby?
I'm looking at detrimental in a different way, that I would rather see a three-family there than an abandoned building after they've done so much work on the house. Um, but I understand, i- it would be nice if council were here tonight to give us that clarity before we move on.
I mean, you know, from a feeling place, sure, you know, I agree that, you know, I've seen the work that's been done. There's a lot of intention. Uh, the space in the property looks light-years better than it did, you know, two years ago. And, and so for me, that, you know, that's not an issue at all, and, and agreed, Gabby, it's just...
So what are our procedural choices? Can we just put, can we, can we table this and bring in council and ask and continue this at another time?
We, we absolutely can. That's-
Well, Alex has her hand up. I want, Alex, you wanted to contribute?
Yeah, I was gonna say you could table it, and, um, you know, I think, right, the question is just do we need a variance before granting the special permit, right? Like, that's kind of the basis of where we're at, which is fair, and that's what it does show in 2253D is, you know, you can issue a variance from the ZBA um, under that non-conforming structures thing, so...
Yeah, and it may be not even that far.
Right.
I, I'm, I'm, if we were just applying the test in 2253, I'd be ready to vote on this right now. I just don't know how 2253 and 2255 are, um, you know, how, how 2255 affects 2253. So, uh, I would want clarity on that first. We might not even need to use the V-word.
Right, that's fair.
Yeah, so, yeah. Uh, then, if, once we get clarity, um, you know, and, and we can if, if it turns out we can apply 2253, um, great. Uh, and, um, you know, if it, if it gets to be a, a little more complicated, then we can see what council recommends. But, yeah, um, I, I would also be, you know, prepared to, to make a motion to continue this in, until we can, uh, hear from council, unless anyone else has anything.
Okay, well, uh, there's no other motion present, right? So, if that's the motion you care to make.
Uh, sure. Um, Amy, when's our next meeting?
That would be, uh, I believe, 11:20?
11:20, and are we doing 7:30 again?
Uh, no, 6:30. You have, I mean, you've closed the hearing, so you don't need to continue the hearing. What you are doing is, um, continuing deliberations.
Yeah.
I am not in town on the 20th.
Oh, okay.
The, I don't know if that, because David's not here tonight, we need to, we get to take a look at another, another date.
Yeah, let me take a quick look at the calendar.
The following week? Or even the, earlier in the month?
Yeah.
Or even a different day?
Okay. Let me just get the calendar up.
The week? The week before is open in Town Hall currently, the 13th.
I'm sorry, the 13th? Yeah, that actually, the 13th is wide open as far as, uh, there are no other meetings.
I, I am not available from the 8th to the 24th.
Oh.
Even remotely.
Uh, we could do the 6th. We would need to get, uh, council to get back to us, but the 6th is open. 5th, 6th, 7th.
Yeah, I can be flexible on, on those days.
Excuse me?
This work.
You can do...
If everybody else can.
Keeping the Thursday is good, I think, um...
Yeah, uh, that would be November 5th through the 7th.
5th, 6th, 7th?
Yes, I could, I could do those.
Gabby, how about you?
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
Are you available November 5th, 6th, or 7th for the next meeting?
Um, yes, I think so. All of those.
I'm gonna go with the 6th, Thursday the 6th.
Yes, okay, so Thursday the 6th, that, 6:30, everyone's good with that?
6:30 or 7:30?
Uh, 6:30, we can do 6:30 now.
Okay, great.
Alright, so, in that case, I would like to make a motion to contin- continue deliberations on the special permit for 7 Thayer Street to November 6th at 6:30 PM.
Second.
Alright. Let's take a vote on the motion. Gabby?
Aye.
Mark?
Mark Brennan, aye.
David Potter, aye.
Tia Christiansen, aye.
Okay, so we will, uh, continue our deliberations at that time. We welcome you back. Okay. See that we have any other business?
Um, I just wanted to mention, I, I think I sent you guys an email.
Oh, yes.
The applicant for Yankee Candle, their sign is ready to go. Um, the amount of time it took us to get the decision out, signed, stamped, their appeals period is up on October 31st, which is when their sign is, uh, supposed to come down. They don't want to physically put up the new sign. It's ready to go. They don't want to put it up before their appeals are up, and they just wanted to check, like, is anybody going to be upset if the temporary sign is up for the first week or two of November? Just in order to allow them to let the appeals period, uh, on the, the special permit decision run out before they invest in actually mounting the sign.
So that's their question. They don't, they don't want to pay for the mounting if it's not gonna, if somebody's gonna appeal it.
I just want to know if, if the, if that would, um, be a problem for the board? If the temporary sign was up for an extra week or two?
I don't see it as a problem. Does anybody? I see shaking hands. We're, we're good with that.
Okay, okay, great. I, I told them I would ask, so, okay.
Okay, fair enough. That's our other business. Thank you for that. Um, any further discussion?
We have hands up all over the place, yeah.
Yeah, no hands up. I see everybody's yawning. Um, what's the last thing? Mail? Do we have any mail?
Oh, we got a hand up.
Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to put it down. Um, I just wanted to, uh, let the board know, since it's been in the papers and stuff, that, um, Two Sugarloaf Street, um, is going for site plan review before the planning board on November 3rd. Um, and it doesn't appear to Bob or I that they'll need to come before you all for a variance to actually manage to fit their development within that footprint.
Alright, thank you.
Great.
A former Cumberland.
That's the abandoned Cumberland Farms. There's gonna be a drastic change going on there.
Alright, thanks for sharing that.
I see smiles, so, excited.
Are we allowed to ask what it's gonna be?
Yeah, there was, um, yeah, there'll be a full application stuff, you know, posted on Monday, but essentially, it's a, a three-story mixed-use, um, commercial residential structure. So, commercial on the bottom, um, one accessible, uh, rental unit, apartment unit. And then the next, the two other floors, which are below the building height requirements, are gonna be all apartments as well.
Awesome.
It'll look like some of the old pictures of town. That's about what was there.
And, yeah, and it, they, um, included even a mansored roof and, you know, kind of an old throwback to some of the historic hotels that were right around the common.
Right.
Very good, alright.
Hopefully not another piece of place.
Or a haircut. Alright, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Gabby?
Aye.
Mark?
Mark Brennan, aye.
David Potter, aye.
Tia Christiansen, aye.
Alright, thanks, everyone.
Alright, good night.
We may not be the quickest committee, but we're the most fun.